We call this May 16, 2024, meeting for the Reno County Planning Commission to order. Staff, do you call the roll?
Shortfeger?
Here.
Drann?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Felton?
Here.
Macklin?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Gertsen?
Here.
Welcome to everyone. We've got a full board this evening. It's great to see everybody. You've received your packets this week. I'll trust that you've had a chance to review them. And those packets was the minutes for the April 18 meeting. Chair will entertain a motion on those minutes.
Chairman, I will move for approval of those minutes with a clarification. And that clarification is on page 24. I admit that I made a wrong assumption when we heard this last meeting. I assumed that temporary tower was going to be taken down after the permanent tower was installed. But I find in the minutes that the cellar wheels will be removed before the permanent tower. And I made a wrong assumption when I attended the meeting. So I approve the minutes as submitted. Recommend and approve.
Okay. They're moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the April 18 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. The Kansas Supreme Court has defined a rezoned or conditional use permit public hearing as a quasi judicial function to ensure the rights of all parties of interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the planning commission in an orderly manner. The planning commission will follow the fact defining procedure which is outlined in each chair. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. If a recommendation is made tonight, that recommendation will be based upon the record of information presented to the planning commission. The county commissioners will not conduct a separate public hearing or accept additional written documents. The county commissioners will consider written requests for additional public comment or documents based only on valid claims that the public hearing process was incomplete or based upon new information which has become available since the public hearing. For purposes of this county commission policy, a public hearing is considered incomplete only if the planning commission failed to follow its procedural guidelines which resulted in a denial of due process to a party of interest or if the planning commission failed to allow an interested party an opportunity for public comment. For purposes of the county commission policy, new information shall pertain only to the germane information which did not exist at the time of the public hearing, for which was unknown or could not have been discovered with reasonable diligence. An example may be a traffic study completed after the planning commission recommendation. Planning commission recommendation to the county commissioners will be accompanied by a summary of proceedings before the planning commission at its public hearing along with the report and recommendations of the county planner, letters, informal petitions, and other information constituting a record of proceedings provided to the planning commission before and during the public hearing. If the planning commission makes a recommendation after tonight's public hearing, this case will be presented to the county commissioners at their next available meeting after the protest period expires. Contact planning staff or visit the website for the county commissioner agenda items. Any party who wishes to require their county commissioners to decide this case by supermajority vote may file a protest petition pursuant to KSA 12-757 at the office of the Reno County Clerk, 125 West First Avenue, Hutchinson, Kansas, within 14 days following the decision by the planning commission. The form is on the Reno County website, the planning department webpage. I'll now formally open the public hearing regarding case number 2024-05, a request by John Van Bruggen and Clydesdale Frames Company Incorporated for conditional use permit to establish a church and clinical counseling center on land zone R2 suburban residential district. The property is located at 7201 East Fourth Avenue. Have any of the planning commission members had any outside contacts regarding this case?
No.
Do any planning commission members have a conflict of interest in this case?
No.
Will the applicant please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record? You have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted to you at the discretion of the chair. Planning commission members may request clarification at the end of your presentation or may have questions.
My name is John Van Bruggen. I'm the owner operator of Clydesdale Frames Company. We're a timber frame company located here in South Hutchinson. This is my wife, Annette Van Bruggen. She's a director at the Mary Magdalene House, which is the property in question that we are talking about. So, a number of years ago, she got her master's in pastoral counseling and was doing kind of a kitchen ministry thing. Her idea was all the problems of families get solved in kitchens, not sterile offices. And so our kitchen was being utilized for this. I live at 610 North Clydesdale, way out there in the county, about four miles from this property that we're talking about. And that was fine, but we talked it'd be nicer to have like a different place or wasn't just in the home. I'm trying to watch the hockey game. She's trying to counsel, that kind of thing. So, we started looking for properties to remodel, that kind of, and we stumbled into this 2.6 acres right there on Fourth Street that had old drug trailers on it. And were able to arrive at a price. That's a different story, a great story. And so we got rid of, tore the drug trailers down, threw all that stuff away. And then I thought, let's build a model home that I can use as a show home for the company and build it a little bit differently than our normal design so show people different options, that kind of thing. And, but build a big kitchen in it where she can do the kitchen ministry, counseling, that kind of part of it. And so I came and talked with Mark and said, hey, I need a building permit. This is what I want to do. I want to build this show home. And communicated, nobody's going to live here. It's going to be used for show home reasons, and then we're going to do some other stuff out of it. Now, that other stuff grew and grew and grew where we got to the place where, and I'm ordained as well, and so I was leading a Saturday night service in town, and COVID really kind of killed that. And so that kind of moved over into Sunday mornings in the garage of this building that we built. And anyway, it was 10 people, 15 people. I didn't think a whole lot about it until it was 45 people. And then I said, hey, something's got to give. So I came and talked to Mark and I said, man, I've got to build another building here. I mean, I've got to get right with you guys. I mean, this has grown beyond what we ever thought. And so that started the process of this communication where I was like, okay, how do I do this? How do I get a special use conditional permit? How do I do it? And so we outlined a plan. He had some solar stuff that he was working on, and so he gave me homework. Go figure this out. Fill out these things. Ask me questions. He's good at that, giving homework. And so I worked through that process, and we continued to grow in people. And honestly, as a pastor, I didn't know how to tell people they couldn't come. You know, you can come on odd numbered Sundays, but not even numbered Sunday. I didn't know how to do that part. And so we've continued to grow, and the groups that she leads has continued to get more and more where we're bursting at the seams and have to move into this, to a different building that's on the same property. So to do that, we've got to get right with you guys so that we're not operating, telling people about Jesus yet we're being illegal. And so there's certainly a conflict there, and I'm aware of it. And so part of that is to get the permitting so that you guys know what we're doing, and we're doing it the way that you want us to do it. Now, how the ministry actually works, the mission itself, is Annette sees folks one-on-one, and we have a clinical lady who also uses the building, and she sees folks one-on-one. But there's also groups that meet on different nights. She could tell you a lot better about how all of that works Monday through Saturday. My focus is really what happens on Sunday mornings. So Sunday mornings, our service starts at nine. We also have breakfast after service in which we feed everybody that's there, and it's what I call good breakfast. It's not, you know, an orange, I mean, it's like pancakes, bacon, egg. It's good breakfast. And so that building is pretty full on Sundays from about eight o'clock in the morning till about noon. And then sometimes later on in the evening, there may be a smaller Bible study session, that kind of thing that happens. That's typically Sunday. Monday through Saturday, different groups kind of come and go depending on appointment times that counselors may have, depending on what kind of group is meeting that night. Some groups are rather large. They might be 10, 15 people. Some groups are two, three people. And the different, there's been a whole lot of different organizations now that have partnered with us, with the Mary Magdalene House, to provide mental health services. So Horizons is involved, and St. Francis is involved, and DCF is involved, and you guys should have all of that written down somewhere. I provided that somewhere. So, that's the gist of it, that, yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to provide a service to help the community, help the people that we work with. And we stumbled into the property workforce, and so we're seeking conditional use permit to be able to utilize it for that rather than just a, I'm still going to use it as a show home, by the way. I mean, I'm still going to take potential clients over there and show them the timber work and that kind of thing. But it's, instead of it being model home with some counseling, it's way more ministry now with some model home tours on the side. That isn't even the thrust of it anymore. So that's it in a nutshell. Anything I need to add here? Does that capture?
No, you got it.
Okay. Do I stay for questions or I sit?
You're expanding. That's fantastic. You're expanding some parking. What is your plan when you outgrow the parking that you're proposing?
Can I move away from here?
Yeah, for sure.
So if I have to get more parking, I've got trees from there all the way to there, they can go, and I can gather, I can get more that way. Honestly, I'm hoping we don't outgrow the parking that we have. But I didn't want to build this, and we're already doing that, you know? So I can get more there if needed, which will add, you know, this double here, I can get that double there.
When is your, I don't want to talk all the time here. What is your, when do you see your peak use for the facility?
Do you mean weekly or do you mean seasonally?
What day of the week? And maybe it is seasonally.
Sundays would be the big day. So Sundays would be the big day for sure. That new building will seat 150 to 200. It's big enough to seat 200. I can't imagine that. But, you know, 150 to 200 people, if that's the reality, we'll barely be able to park that now. My hunch is we may have to lose a couple more trees, you know, to gain 10 more stalls, that kind of thing. But Sundays are always going to be that big day. What happens Monday through Saturday doesn't have the volume of people at the same time. Well, there was a couple, there was a couple things that Mark made as far as questions that I wanted to address. Is this the appropriate time to do that?
Yes, sir.
In Article 10-105, on page five, Mark has a concern about the, like headlights. Anybody who's parking facing Fourth Street or facing the top of the page, there is a house over there has a bunch of chicken coops, that kind of thing. Those headlights could get into their living room window. That's a real thing. And then the concern about the right-of-way, the ditch right-of-way there. And so he's recommending a four-foot tall fence, wooden fence to be built there to protect against both of those things. If needed, I'm good with that. But there is a, there is a fence there currently, a wire fence, and I've got to change the pitch of that parking lot right now. Water will drain toward the building. It's a gravel parking lot at this point. And so I'm going to excavate all of that gravel, and then we're going to change the pitch of that, which flattens it down, creates a berm where that fence currently sits will sit. I don't know, I'm not going to change pitch by four feet, but I think I'll change the pitch enough that the headlights are not going to get across the road, and the right-of-way would currently still be protected by the existing fences there. One of the other things that Mark brought to my attention, which was a great, great call on his part, which is on page eight, concerning rentals. So about halfway down where the writing turns to italicized words, it says, "Staff concludes that utilizing this parcel as a church counseling center and other events could not be considered compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The deciding factor is the lack of specific information on how these quote 'other events' occur." Great call. So the other events would be the times where the facility is quote "being rented," rented out to like for weddings or graduation parties, things like that. And what we're really trying to do is create a revenue stream that feeds the ministry so we don't have to have lots of fundraisers and things like that to keep everything going. As we grow, you know, obviously your budget grows with that. So I'm a pastor, I am going to do weddings, but I don't want to be a venue. I mean, that's not the intention, is to be a venue. So any of our rentals would be around our current ministry schedule. They would be congruent with what we stand for, not going to have bachelor parties and stuff, none of that kind of stuff's going to happen. And so it would be available for rent, but it's not like every weekend, every weekend, every weekend, we're trying to jam 300 people in there. We understand the limits of our size, and we have a, is image the right word? We have an image that we're trying to keep, and so we're not going to rent that would go against that. Does that make sense? So that's going to limit our clientele, but I still think we could generate enough that it could pay for our revenue needs as far as keeping the ministry going. When, last part, verse three, there's that pastor, verse three. Number three, stay on page eight. As far as parking goes, sometimes we have, we could have an event where we have more people coming than we have parking for at a moment. When that happens, we have a, we have a relationship with the Bethany Nazarene Church, which is about an eighth of a mile away there, and we're allowed to use their parking lot, and then we get a van from Midwest Ford? Midwest Ford lets us use one of their vans, and we shuttle. And we shuttle people in because I don't want people walking down Fourth Street either or parking in the ditch. And so we've made those kind of connections with the neighbors around. We have one event a year that's usually, it's the backyard barbecue, it's coming up in June, and typically people all show up at the same time. And so we try to park them over there so that people aren't walking through the parking lot while cars are coming in and the mayhem that can occur from that. So, that's all I got, unless there's any other questions.
So that agreement is up and new, when the church is not utilizing their parking lot, you're utilizing it kind of?
Correct. We check schedules.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we check schedules, yep.
So they have Sunday services too, I assume?
Yes. So Sunday service wouldn't be something where we're shuttling?
I mean, okay, but does that church have a Sunday service at the same time you're having one?
Yes.
So you may not have all that parking available to you, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, our Sunday services, we have to be able to park who's coming for Sunday service.
Right.
Yeah, so if we had an event like the backyard barbecue where there could be, you're not putting people in a building per se, they're just on the grounds, we're trying to move that parking.
How many people do you have in attendance on a Sunday now?
About 80 last Sunday.
80. Is your parking adequate for that?
Yeah.
Or is it full?
It's?
You've got 47, 49 spaces, I think is what you saw on your plan.
Yeah, it's, it's not full yet.
Okay. But you say you've got your building will have capacity for a couple hundred people. So you're not going to have any parking if you do that. Even if you expand it, you're going to add another 20-some spaces, you know?
Possibly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You see a potential problem coming down with your growth. It's good, but it also creates issues that?
Yes.
I think, you know, you need to start thinking about how you're going to handle. Because if we approve this tonight, then you're going to be kind of locked in on parking and everything else, you know?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Even if the other trees go, you're thinking, I still won't have enough? Is that what?
You said you'd have about what you have on the other side, so you'd give another 20-some spaces. Then you'd probably lose what the four or five you have there along the, whatever that is, the east side, when it come in on the drive.
Yeah, if I have to expand beyond, beyond what this would give me?
You've got some parking right there, when you come in on the drive, right there, you'd probably lose that.
Yeah, they show them this way, but everybody parks this way. So, you know, if those parkings went all the way across there and I could get all the way across here, you know, I could add quite a bit. If I needed, I could get down into here, then I would have to build a fence around this playground and seclude it. But you're right, I'm landlocked, I mean?
Could have further clarification on the existing building and their proposed building and the schedule on the proposed building? And when you talked about last Sunday having 80 people there, were they all in the existing building?
They were all in the existing building. And then the approach, so the garage is right here, so the approach to the garage, we open up the doors, and that's our, and we call it the veranda because it sounds cool, but it's just the overflow.
And what's the schedule on the proposed building?
As far as completion?
Or start or completion or whatever?
Concrete is poured, and the timbers are going up next week, and we're hoping to be done by first of January to be in.
And that's the building that would be suitable for 200 people?
Yeah, that building.
I'm anxious to hear from Mark.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Not yet.
Thank you very much. Since there aren't any further comments for applicant and planning commissioners, we'll hear from the planning staff.
Mark Byatchen, county planning. Well, I think John's done a very good job explaining, you know, his proposal. Looking at the zoning map, you can see that the property is currently zoned R2. It's in a real kind of heavily residential area. I would say that there's properties on the north side that are not being used for residential purposes and stuff, but more commercial. And then you can see that there's a subdivision here that's to the west of him, where the Nazarene church mentioned is further to the west on that property. So I think, I'm going to kind of defer a lot of my report because you've received all that, and I'm going to probably go through a lot of my slides and try and help you understand maybe a little bit more of the proposal. Obviously, you've been looking at this map a lot. That map is included in your packet. Your, John is right in the fact that, yeah, we did issue a zoning permit several years ago for him to construct that single-family dwelling. More recently, we did issue a zoning permit here for that building to be used as a residential barn or shed structure. And he understands that we've done that in other cases in the past where we can issue permits for residential buildings with the understanding that if this is not approved, then the activities proposed for that building cannot be, you know, occurring in that building. It has to be used for residential purposes, and so that's why a permit was issued for that building. It does meet setback requirements. It's going to be a residential barn. If this is ultimately approved, then it can be converted into the church that he would like to use it for. You see up top that he's proposed 47 parking spaces along the road on the other side of his entryway there. 47 spaces is what is required by the zoning regulations. There actually is a specific number that's set aside in our zoning regulations for churches, and so he does meet the county zoning requirement here for the number of parking spaces. That doesn't mean though that you can't increase that or decrease that, such is what we did last month with the daycare center. He's requesting two waivers from our regulations. The first one is regarding the paving. He prefers not to pave his driveway and the parking area. I believe he said in his report that, you know, he wants to kind of maintain that rustic, you know, feel for everybody that's visiting that. I understand that, again, we've never really made anybody pave the parking lot if they requested a waiver, and so staff is okay with recommending that that waiver be granted. The other one, though, is really kind of a big concern that we had to kind of work through before he made application. That was regarding the parking stalls. Our regulations say that parking stalls cannot be located within the 30-foot setback of a property. And so all these parking stalls would have had to have been looped 30 feet to the south. Well, as you can imagine, that's going to probably severely hamper his ability to get adequate parking on that property. And so the second waiver that he is requesting is to be able to put the parking stalls right on the property line, which is the right-of-way line of Fourth Avenue. So, you know, in looking at that, I had some reservations on that, that request here. I kind of think through it, you know, a little bit. I get it that we want to have adequate parking, and he wants to be able to utilize the area, but I think I also have to take into consideration, you know, the integrity of our road right-of-way. We've got ditches out there, and so if we allow people to park up next to that right-of-way, chances are car tires are going to be driving over that road right-of-way, compromising the ditch that's out there. Our guys are going to have to be out there constantly possibly repairing that ditch because people are accidentally driving on that, and it's going to kind of ruin that ditch out there. And so there was that concern, you know, that I had with that. So I felt as a compromise to that, I felt that if we would grant a waiver for him to park along the road right-of-way up next to that property line, that there should be some type of barrier put in place to help kind of protect the integrity of our ditch, but also to help prevent car lights. You know, our regulations also say that you need to put up some type of screening to prevent car lights shining onto another residential property. Well, you know, car lights is not going to be every time, all during the year here, but it is a concern. And again, if you put trees or bushes out there, that's going to cause him to have to move those parking spaces away from those trees and bushes because they're going to grow over time. And so my thought was with this, as a compromise, if we're going to compromise our regulations, then he should put some type of barrier up that would help protect the road right-of-way there. And so that request for me was to install that four-foot fence along the road right-of-way up until all the parking stalls end. So I'm not requesting that he right now put parking stalls way on the east, or not, excuse me, parking stalls, fence along the eastern side where there's no parking, just up until where you have the cars that are parking. If parking expands in the future, then it should be expected that that fence would be expanded along that right-of-way because we don't want, you know, the ditch being destroyed by car tires, nor do we want people driving intentionally or unintentionally through the ditch to get on Fourth Avenue versus going out, you know, his driveway. And so I've got some better pictures that can show what I'm talking about than what this drawing is. Currently, there is a wastewater system that serves this building down in this area, I believe. And then he is proposing to put another wastewater system, as you can see on his drawing, right in this area. So there'll be two wastewater systems on that property. So, you know, right there and then, that's going to kind of eliminate this entire area to be used for parking or additional buildings. And so he's really going to be kind of boxed in with his parking right now with those two wastewater systems up there. Plus, as you can see, you know, he's got like a little playground area, and obviously you don't want to mix, you know, vehicles with a playground area out there. This is maybe a little bit clearer picture that kind of shows his parking area, his gravel surface. Obviously, we've got the existing building here, the new one that he is building, this just doesn't have the aerial photo underneath it, so maybe a little bit. So maybe a little bit clearer to see. This is a, a picture of the, of the area right now. You can see the existing building. The new one is, is proposed to be going like in this area, I believe. And you see the part, this is a fairly new one. This was taken just February of this year, so it's fairly, fairly accurate. Fourth Avenue is at the, at the top of the picture. This is one kind of looking to, to the south, again, taken February of this year. This is kind of looking at the front, front of the building. You can see his gravel, gravel parking area and you can see Fourth Avenue is down here with, with our, with our ditch. This is taken from Google Earth from August of, of last year. And so you can see that's the, the front of the building with his, his gate. And then we're looking south. This is gonna be actually gonna be looking at the property across the street, directly across from his driveway. So you can see there's nothing right there, doesn't show you much other than the fact that, you know, it's just a big, big tree and bushes right there. So there's not gonna be any issues necessarily with, with car lights obviously driving out. Parking lot doesn't show you much, but I just wanted to let you know what is directly across the street from, from his driveway. However, I do have, now, and this picture is actually looking north directly across from his parking lot to the west. So that is the property directly across from the north. As you can see, like the chicken coops and some other greenery bushes like that. So that would be across the, the main, main parking area. You can see there's another house directly across there. So that's all that, that I have for that. In reviewing this, like I say, staff recommended granting the two waivers that the applicant requested in, in his request. And then I recommended approval based off of the eight conditions that you see listed in your staff report. And then I have attached seven conditions of approval. The first one was that the partial shall be developed only at the stripe in the plan of operation. Any lighting of the parking area should be shielded and directed on the property. No activities other than what is specified in the approved plan of operation may be conducted on the partials. So that would allow like weddings and the funerals and, and the other, um, you know, mission activities fundraisers, I was trying to think of the word, fundraisers that they would like to do out there. Fourth condition was should install that four-foot solid fence. We don't want it to be chain-linked or anything like that. Certainly use vinyl or if he has another type of, of, you know, material that he would like to use, then he could seek our approval from staff to be able to use a different type of materials, not wood or, or vinyl. Expansion of the parking lot beyond what is shown, um, on the site plan or paving of that parking lot should require a drainage plan be submitted and reviewed by, by public works to ensure that we're not gonna be pushing water onto other properties. Because right now, you know, we've got a fairly large area that's gonna be under, under rock. And so if we expand that parking, especially over here to the east side, where's all that water gonna go? And is it gonna be going on to other people's property? And that's something that would need to be looked at and, and prevented either by including a detention pond or routing the water somewhere to the back of the property. So something like that would have to be developed. Applicants should meet all applicable federal, state, and local regulations. And then last one is, of course, if, if there's anything going on in the property that we haven't approved, the county has the right to rescind the, the conditional use permit. With that, I, I'd stand for questions.
You had mentioned that if he should extend the parking and where the area where the trees are and whatnot. And we did require a fence along the other area that that fencing should extend over to the new parking also.
I think, yeah.
And there's nothing in your conditions that kind of goes on to that.
There's nothing that goes on, you know, on to that. I wasn't sure what the, the applicant's future plans are, if they're planning on, you know, further expansion of the parking or not.
If he does expand it, though, I mean, would he have to come back to us to expand the parking lot?
Not for the parking lot. No, that would still just be, be remade at, at staff level and stuff and so.
Would he have to come to you at least?
Come to me, yeah.
And you could request that that fence be.
Request, if required, I could request that he would extend it.
Condition it be required.
Could, yeah. You could, you could change my condition if you like.
You said a footage limitation on the, what your proposed fencing was.
Based off of his measurements was there and my intention with that was to just, I didn't want to cost him additional money than what he's already spending, but I felt like, okay, if we do that, then all he needs to go is just to where the parking lot is versus making him put a fence in for the rest of the property that doesn't have any parking right now.
Is it possible in your condition five where you talk about expansion of the parking area beyond what is shown on the approved site? Would it also require the fencing mentioned in item four, something like that? Could that be modified?
Yeah, you can modify that. Certainly, that's the board's prerogative to, to modify that down. It says that if, if parking is expanded beyond what is shown on the site plan, then the same type of fence must be installed. That would be in any kind of motion to approve, you just make a modification.
Is there a reason not to have a fence on that part, portion of the parking if he does expand it?
Not that I, no.
I'm still gonna have concerns of the, the right-of-way ditch and, you know.
I'm still gonna have the same concern with that, yes. And I think the concerns would be, you know, if, if the parking is, you know, on that east property line or so over there too, you know, there could be people that accidentally, you know, parking over on that other gentleman's property, whether there's a wire fence there or not, you know, car tires will go over there and that gentleman may not appreciate something like that. I didn't want to have it like as a six-foot fence. I didn't want to create like a, a compound or fortress type of situation or anything like that. So I felt like a four-foot fence, you know, it's not gonna block every single car light with people with taller, taller vehicles, but it should capture, I would think, the majority of them. Or like you heard his testimony today about, you know, having to degrade that parking lot.
Or also provide a barrier you're talking about to keep people out of the ditch.
Right, I felt like it would assist, at least at minimum, it would assist in preventing some of the car lights to go there.
Mark, the existing septic system, is there a pond or is it a direct, buried laterals?
I believe it's a lateral field, I think.
And the proposed septic system will be the same?
Proposed, I don't know where they're at in that process. I assume it would be similar to what they have right now. I haven't spoken to Darcy on that. I think they're still in the review process of, of that, but yeah. It'll be approved by her, whatever it would be.
The source of water for that site for people is what?
A well, well water.
It's a well.
And he may have bottled water too as well, you know, for events or so. But the, the source of the property would be well water. It's not on a, a public water system if that's what you're, you know, asking.
The existing well is adequate to provide, to serve the proposed building also?
In factor two, you, you mentioned a lack of specific information on how often the events occur. What you've heard today satisfies some of that?
Yes, yeah, you know, again, the report was written prior to the public hearing.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that what you're hearing today.
I think, you know, my concern, you know, I, I think, you know, in, in writing that was, it's great to have fundraisers here with maybe like the congregation that's showing up here. However, are these events open up to the public where you could have five hundred, a thousand people? Then we have a concern to where we've got people potentially parking on Fourth Avenue, which can't happen. Something like that can't happen. That has to be controlled or that is a ground that we can rescind that conditional use permit because we've got people lining Fourth Avenue to go and attend one of the events. So that's where the parking came into concern. And that's where you heard him say, well, they have a relationship with the Nazarene church where the additional parking could be on it. So yeah, that's where I, I think I mentioned that where, yeah, you can't, no way for parking on Fourth Avenue.
I just wanted to clarify.
So yeah, I think, we didn't have a testimony here yet. I think, you know, that, that helps me understand more of what these events are, are geared towards.
Is that, uh, factor number six, you, you also mentioned that it's suitable for the proposed use at present intensity. So they gotta go hand in hand.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Look, I want to follow up on Harley's comment about the septic system. Although that was on my mind, it, it seems like it's potentially fairly active site and two-point-six acres is not a lot to accommodate a septic system. So I guess, I guess we have to leave it up to Darcy and company to work through that. But it does seem to be a, kind of a pinch point for me.
Yeah, there's not a lot of, you know, acres, you know, after you think two-point-six plus or minus, you know, is adequate, but you know, you got two large buildings going in, you're gonna have a large parking lot, you know, going in. Plus, you have an existing system and wells that we have to be conscientious of. But I think, you know, what you need to understand is he's working with, with the environmental people and preliminarily right now, from my understanding, yeah, that they're gonna be able to get a system in there and it will comply with the sanitation code. Is it tight? Yeah, it's gonna be tight. Obviously, you know, the more land you have, the more options you have. But I, I think I have not heard anything from them yet that says that, yeah, we have a concern. And so it'll be installed according to the code.
I can address that if need be.
Okay, yeah. All right, yeah, maybe, maybe after I'm done, after our audience members, yeah.
Mark, so if this conditional use permit hypothetically wasn't approved, like the proposed barn can, so there can still be construction moving forward with that and the current ministries in the existing building can continue? Everything just continues bursting at the seams, is that?
We would have to do something different with the ministry because, yeah, it's right now, it's only supposed to be like a single-family dwelling and so. So if we're, you know, looking at a church, we need a conditional use permit to be able to operate a, a church. Same thing with like the counseling center. You gotta remember residential zoning, it's only for residential purposes outside of home occupation type of, of activities that can occur on, on the property. And so we would have to have a further conversation with the applicant, you know, with that about church activities going on.
So regardless, something has to be done.
Yes.
I'd like to, this is probably not the right place, I know it's not the right place to make this comment, but I want to get it on record because I think this is the fourth case we've had where, you know, building has occurred before permits were issued or things were out of compliance and, uh... And I'm not picking on the Van Bruggens, but it seems like there's something missing in our process about communication and enforcement, um, understanding. I, I don't know, I'm not attempting to solve the problem. I just view it as we're, we're getting these cases coming up and it puts everybody in sometimes an uncomfortable situation where, you know, maybe the property owners didn't fully understand or maybe they just took advantage of the situation. So I just want to get that on record and hopefully we can address it as a commission at some point.
Yeah, Mark, as far as the brick and mortar is concerned, you're good with all the permitting process. It's more the use that's gonna be taking place inside the building that this conditional use.
Yeah, mainly the use. And so like we've, we've talked to many applicants, you know. Unfortunately, yeah, I don't know how to get that, communicate that word out. You know, they didn't realize that they needed to do this. Ultimately, like I say, you know, I'm looking at the building as similar to the daycare center we did. I can issue a permit to put in, you know, an addition or I can put in a, a deck, if you, if you will. Those are all additions to the building. But that doesn't mean that the use is permitted, that you want to use that building for. So there's a distinction by getting a permit to build a building for residential use or getting a permit to be able to build that building for church services. And so, yeah, ideally, it'd be nice if we came to us and requested that permission to be able to operate a, a church. But we had that conversation, so he understands the, the risk, if you will, of going forward with this building and getting it built in the timeframe that he would like and having it only be used for residential purposes versus being able to convert that to what he would like to use that for, so.
Any other questions, staff?
The drainage plan, you're okay with it as far as, as is? And you'd only require the drainage study to be done if the parking situation changes?
Yeah, as is, I think right now, yeah. I think we're, we're fine. I mean, we don't do a lot of requests for drainage. Drainage plan, we've done probably one in my tenure here and stuff. Yeah, it's a big parking lot area like that that can be covered in rock and driven on, but I stopped short of requiring that to be submitted by him to make sure that we don't have any kind of water issues and stuff.
Well, I was just thinking, you know, it's now on two-point-six acres. It's got two, at least two buildings plus the parking, soil compaction during construction and rocks. And it does seem like there's some potential for, the water's gonna go somewhere.
Yeah, that's why I, I thought, do we require that or not? And I decided to not require it, but I felt like, okay, if we're gonna expand that and include the whole eastern part of the property as far as additional parking, that's when I think we need to see something to make sure that we're not pushing water onto anybody else's, else's property at that point in time. If we're gonna be expanding operations, we're gonna be expanding cars, you're expanding the, the amount of area that's not gonna be able to drain from water. So I felt like, okay, well, that, at that point in time, then I think we need to do something to ensure that drainage is gonna be properly contained on that property.
And Mark, your item four calls for that fence to be in by October two thousand and twenty-four, but there's, the applicant has, has suggested he's gonna change the slope of the parking lot so that the lights don't do what they shouldn't be doing and that shining across the road into residents. Help me understand the timetable on the parking lot modifications.
The October one, I, I needed to set a specific date because I can't say, and we can't say, that just install a fence and leave it as an open end because then, when's it gonna get installed? What doesn't say when it has to be installed? So I wanted to try and put a date in there that would let him know that, yeah, this is something that needs to be done and needs to be done not right away because you're still obviously getting a building done and that's your priority right now. But hopefully by then, he can take some time to start installing that fence. And so I was hoping to put it out there far enough to where, I'm not pressing him to get it done, but yeah, it's something that needs to be done if it's made to be a condition of, of approval versus leaving it open-ended. Then it becomes a discussion between him and I. Well, yeah, I want it done by then, but it doesn't say it has to be done by then. So then what do we do with something like that? So I, I wanted a black and white date, so I, I picked October first. That's all it really is.
And I understand that, and I agree with that. My question is, is the applicant has implied that he's gonna change the slope of the parking lot so that water doesn't run into his building? And that would help solve the, the, the problem with slight shadow across the road, which is too close to the road according to our regulations.
And if you want to accept that, that testimony or so that he will, will do that, then this board can certainly remove that condition of approval of, of requiring a fence if you want to, to do something like that.
Harley, I think one of the other things Mark was looking at for the fence as a barrier is to prevent people from crossing through the, the right-of-way, the, the ditch. Provide a barrier there so they have to actually use the driveway for the facility. You know, so it's a twofold purpose, not just the.
Yeah, I understand that, yes. But the applicant has, has implied he's gonna change the slope of the driveway of the parking lot, which would enhance the same principle that the fence does. And, but there's nothing in here about that happening.
Right, yeah. Yeah. That information, yeah, that was told to me, I think, after I had already had the report and submitted it to the board. And so, yeah, that's why there was no mention of changing that slope.
I guess I'd be further interested in what the applicant says he's planning on doing.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to comment on this case? I'm just gonna skip right over that since we don't have anyone in the audience. Would you like to make any further comments?
You want to talk septic?
Yeah, hop up to the podium if you don't mind.
Mark, can you put that overhead back on there one more time?
I'm gonna attempt.
Darcy has been out, we did the test holes and with a plumber and they did... It's not a perk test, but they were looking for, I can't remember the right word. And so there is a plan in place of what size the mound needs to be and what square footage it is. And they gave me a little leeway on location. It would be back in the wooded area south of the new building. And I know it's gotta be 1,500 square feet, you gotta be able to drive around it, and that would be within all of the setbacks that's gonna work. And so I really just have to pick which one of the trees I want to take out of there to make all of that happen. But as far as she's concerned with what the new building's gonna be for, there's no kitchens or anything like that, or showers or anything like that in there. She thinks we're good and that we have enough room to do that. To try and, that's all right. Long time to address the lowering of the parking lot. What my thought was there for the... So the parking lot pitches toward the building west of the gate. East of the gate is flat. East of the gate, there's a berm where the right-of-way is with a wire fence over the top of it. It would be really tough to drive in the ditch on that side. I want to make the west side look like the east side so that the parking lot is flat with a berm and then the... I mean, I'll build a wood fence, you want to build a wood fence, I'm a wood guy, I can do that. But the berm itself is gonna protect that right-of-way and flatten that parking lot, which protects me against water running downhill and protects our neighbor across the street from lights. So...
So ultimately, that berm is gonna get taller just by a design, by your dirt work that you're pulling away from?
Yes, yeah.
What's the differential, do you think? How much dirt are you gonna pull away from that berm?
I'm probably gonna take two feet out of what would be...
From basically the fence line, you're gonna pull another two feet out?
There's, I'm gonna take about two feet of dirt out there, nothing here. And so that, as I drag all of that kind of stuff back, that's gonna heighten the berm that's already there.
I guess you didn't plan on putting this fence by October on top of the berm?
I did not. I did read it in there, but it wasn't something I was gonna fight about. I was like, okay, I'll build a fence.
So where does the water run? Or where will it run with it flat? If there's a berm between the ditch and the parking lot?
Well, with the gravel, it should soak in. And I admit, once you get all the construction equipment off of it. And so I'll have to drag everything and loosen the rock back up again so that we can get it to permeate. There is a downhill slope here that goes through this little alleyway between the existing building and all of the woods that's here. And so when I did that gravel, I excavated a slope through here. So I have about two inches of gravel here, but I have about three feet of gravel here. So that water does come off of the gutters and then runs underneath the rocks and runs out the south side.
Okay, so it's not gonna go like east and west to the neighboring houses?
No, 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 no. In fact, the neighbors on both sides, their property's higher than ours. I mean, if you just stand there and look, their ground is higher, so.
What about the property to the south of you, behind you?
Open field, pasture.
I mean, are you gonna be, if all the drainage is coming down between your buildings, then it's gonna go out the back of your property, correct?
That property line's still quite a bit away from where it comes out. So I'm assuming that the trees and the septic system and all that is taking that stuff up.
How high do you think that berm will be when you're done? Some of the dirt you dig out, you're gonna...
Keep there.
Put on top of the berm, I mean, correct? Raise it up?
Yeah, the berm on this side is probably about 30 inches right now. And it's this side here that I want to make it look like that side. So when you come in the driveway, I mean, here I'm pretty flat, here I'm pitched. And so to make this flat, I'm gonna end up with about the same-sized berm that I have there, which isn't the four feet that Mark's after. So I mean, I can do something additional, but I'm gonna do the berm regardless of the fence. I have to to get the pitch out.
Any other further questions for the applicant?
Thanks.
Staff, you have any other clarifications?
I do not.
Don, I want to quiz you a little bit. If he builds that berm, is that gonna mess with your ditch?
Building the berm's what he needs to do. I don't want him to create anything that drains the water into the county ditch and build on the berm is fine. And that keeps tires or anybody driving over the back slope of the ditch is what I'm concerned about.
Okay, gotcha. Just wanted to clarify that. Okay, any other questions?
That would be an earthen berm, basically, or it would be covered in rock or gravel or what?
It would be an earthen berm at the start of it, but by the time I bring in new gravel, that gravel's gonna spill up that berm some for sure.
Any further questions for applicant or staff? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of a rezone or conditional use permit must be based on the factors that are listed in the staff report and found on the audience chairs. This is time the planning commission can discuss the case and ask procedural questions of staff only. Are there any further discussions we need to have on this topic?
Well, I'm not making a motion yet, but I think number four, we need to put the berm in there.
So you're thinking of requiring a berm or the fence, like some kind of...
Yeah, something...
Or it could be...
A minimum height of something.
Yeah, are we wanting a berm and a fence or a berm or a fence?
Well, I think, or just for... And/or up to a minimum height.
Mark's item four calls for a four-foot solid fence. Berm, we now believe would be about two foot. So it seemed to me like we ought to have more than just a berm there. We ought to have a fence. And I guess I like the original request of Mark of a four-foot fence.
With you, Harley. Because that two feet over time, it will, with the best of maintenance, will erode. And having a permanent fence there will eliminate any chance of any future traffic across that.
So if we have a two-foot berm and a four-foot fence, we're gonna have six feet of screening. Is that right?
Yes.
Now, is that too high to have a compound feel? That I think was mentioned earlier.
That's what I'm thinking, that gets too tall.
Well, that's what I was wondering, because that's taller than me. And I, at one point, you feel like you're entering...
Well, if you got a two-foot berm, I mean, you know, the berm may erode over time or something. You compromise and say, you know, the total height of the berm and fence to not exceed five foot.
Yeah, it's like a combination, so...
Like a three-foot fence on top of the berm. It's gotta be at least five feet between the two of them.
Well, the fence could be inside the berm.
It could, but if we just, instead of saying whether the screening for headlights needs to be either berm or a solid fence, just say we need X amount of screening.
Whether it's let him decide whether he wants a split fence or a bigger berm?
Yeah.
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 Go ahead, Don.
Well, if you're gonna have a berm, you gotta make, not only a berm, you gotta make sure the cars aren't driving up on the berm. Now you're putting your headlights even higher than they would be.
Whereas if you have a fence that's gonna, you just on top of the berm, that's gonna block.
So require a fence, but our height will be...
Maximum height of five feet?
Berm and fence.
Yeah, a combination.
I'd say four. Five seems kinda high. It's gonna screen off the whole, you wouldn't even see it from the road.
But a four-foot...
Look like a private club.
So if there's a fence, then no one's driving up over the berm and getting hung up.
Right.
And...
Let's define wood fence. What are we, are we talking a solid wood fence? Was it, it says solid wood fence. Could we change that to a, since we're gonna be, since the berm is already gonna be there, could we change that wording to where it would not?
More of an open slat.
More of an open slat type of fence.
Then also, if they drive up on the berm any, then the headlights are gonna be shining up, which fence would then block. If we have an open fence, then it's not gonna block it.
Yep.
So maybe require a fence and then the total height from the base of the parking lot is four feet? So whether it's two-foot berm, two-foot fence, six-inch berm?
Shaking his head, yeah.
Three and a half feet fence, just whatever combination. We need four feet of screening to keep headlights out of people's living rooms.
Yeah, the fence would provide a barrier to keep the ditch.
Right, right.
Right.
That's kinda what I was thinking.
Right.
That would take away the compound look, so to speak. If the berm is gonna suffice as some of the shading, then a fence is only needed to keep vehicles from... You're right, and that berm.
And if the berm maybe ends up being a little more modest than we all think just looking at it.
Then the fence could be a little higher.
Yeah, yeah.
There's mud.
So we need to define the fence or are we gonna take staff's solid fence?
Yeah, I think solid fence is sufficient.
I think we need to change it from a minimum four-foot solid fence to a combination, four-foot, minimum four-foot combination of fence and berm somehow. That's what we're talking about. That makes sense. Then, yeah, we also were talking about if we decide to expand parking around the east side, then we might want to put something in there about, you know, that provision would also apply to any expanded parking.
Good at that.
Would that take another permit to expand the parking?
No, we'd not come back before this board just to expand a parking lot.
So in other words, if we want to require that there be a fence along, if he expands the fence or the parking and we want to require that there be a fence there, we've gotta do it now. I think this is gonna take part of the condition. And then if he ever expands it, then the fence goes with it.
Okay. Any other conversation?
So how is the condition gonna be modified?
Well, what we would do on number four, we would change that and say a minimum four-foot combination berm and/or fence, or berm and fence.
Minimum four-foot combination of berm and fence, they would vinyl or other acceptable material.
Of earthen berm? Right, wood and dirt?
Yep.
Or how about a minimum four-foot barrier consisting of earthen berm and solid fence? Something like that. I don't know how you want to word that.
How about minimum four-foot solid screen of berm, wood, vinyl or other acceptable material to staff?
Sounds good.
And then any additional parking must be extended.
Yeah, I like that language. If you decide.
Solid screen.
Repeat that, Jack.
Solid screen of berm, wood, vinyl or other acceptable material to staff.
Berm and fence, and fencing.
I was writing the others, so say it again.
Okay.
Solid screen.
Minimum four-foot solid screen of berm, wood, vinyl or other acceptable material. On existing parking or future parking along Fourth Avenue?
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was trying to think of that. Thank you, Don, I appreciate it. I was trying to...
Proposed parking or additional.
And then a legal date installed by October 1, 24.
Yeah.
Then you're gonna scratch out the legal description meets and bounds, the distances. Is that mature?
Yes, because, well...
Well, you're gonna say...
On there, because we're still, that's still there.
It's still valid, dude. Really, the spirit is we just want to make sure the parking lot isn't...
Well, you just...
But you stop, your legal numbers in here stop that fence at a certain point. So we need to scratch that because we want to say existing in the plan and future expansion.
Along Fourth Avenue.
Makes sense?
No, I think that will fly with it.
Screen acceptable... Shall be installed along existing parking area and future, or existing and future parking?
Yes, existing and future parking.
Along Fourth Avenue. Along Fourth Avenue?
Yeah, because they don't need that anywhere else on the park.
Along Fourth Avenue for the existing and future. And then you still want October 1st, or you want to extend that date?
I don't know. Does that work?
You said you were hoping the building would be done around the first of the year? Is that same deadline?
October 1 might be.
Of course, that's contingent upon him getting his dirt work done, grading the parking lot and whatnot. I don't know if that's in his game plan to do it that fast or not. No, so he's shaking his head, so.
So Jan?
So January 1st?
Yes, I was just thinking the exact same thing. It coincides with the building completion and utilization.
Say by January 1 of 25.
Do you have any concern with the east boundary and parking cars facing east? I mean, we don't know how that might be designed, but there's certainly potential for that. I don't know what is to the east right now.
Well, there's a house. I don't think so. I think there are any expansion to parking, it would be north-south parking stalls. If you're gonna try to maximize the number of parking stalls you've got, which is what he'd be looking for. So there's a wire fence there on the east side.
Any other discussion? Non-chairman, entertain a motion on this case.
Chairman, I, I move for approval of case number 2024-5, request by John Bergman and Fidesdale Frames Company, requesting a conditional use permit for the Reno County zoning regulations to establish a church and clinical counseling center on a partial land zone R2. Suburban residential district is approved based on the eight factors and the seven conditions of approval listed in the staff report. And of the seven conditions, item number four has been modified during this hearing.
Get the page, Harley. Rest of the motion.
Rest of the motion.
Oh.
Other side, over here. Next page over.
Got it wrong way.
Yeah. Over here.
I further move to approve the waiver request to locate parking stalls within the 30-foot setbacks required, and approve the waiver request to not require a parking lot and driveway to be paved based on the reason listed in the staff report and heard at this public hearing.
Second, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, staff, please call the roll. Shortfeger?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Zeltz? Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
I was losing it. Correct. You was successful. The timbers fly on Tuesday, if you wanna come watch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item B on the agenda. I'll now formally open the public hearing regarding case number 2024-06, the request by Horst Properties LLC for conditional use permit to be, to establish a residential duplex on land zone V-1 Village District. The property is located at 3501 East Red Rock Road. Have any of the planning commission members had any outside contacts regarding this case?
No.
No.
Do any planning commission members have a conflict of interest with this case?
No.
Okay. Well, applicant, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted to the applicant at the discretion of the chair. Planning commission members may request clarification in your presentation.
My name is Kurt Horst. We live at 3417 East Red Rock Road, which is right next to the property that's being considered. When we moved into 39 on the map, we sought to purchase the property next to us. It turned out to be quite a task. And it ended up that we were purchasing two different plots that made up that property. And then, in talking to Mark, it was originally one laid out as one property. It's own village, I believe, which is single residence, and we're requesting permission to put a duplex on it. My wife and I are hoping that someday we will live in this property, and as we talked about it, as we're aging, we thought it would be nice to have a, we need more space for when our family comes to visit, but I thought it'd be nice to make a mother-in-law apartment there, or what would be called generally a mother-in-law apartment. So as we age, which we expect to, whether we hope to or not, it might be a place that one of our children could live in part of it, and we live in the other part. We don't know what the future will be, but discovered that that would be okay. But initially, to move into the larger part and then rent the smaller part makes it a duplex. And therefore, we're, we're appealing for the conditional permit to build a duplex. This is an initial concept. It's already changed some, but we don't have the architect completing the work until you have given approval essentially to it. For instance, the roof on the, on it will change pitch, because we will probably, when it pitched for solar, and that actually ends up a little too steep, which will change the things a little bit. The portion on this side would be what would be called a mother-in-law apartment. The rest of it would be the main residence. Two garages with access to Red Rock Road for the larger part of the house, a garage on the back. You'll see some other drawings that'll have that, with access for the mother-in-law apartment garage from the alley. I think Mark will probably have most of the rest of the information, so that's my initial request. You have questions?
Any questions for applicant?
Thank you.
So we're in the downtown area of Yoder. If you hadn't guessed, if you recall, a couple years ago, we approved a conditional use permit for parcel number 33. That was the, the coffee shop. So we're just a little bit west of, of that property here in downtown Yoder area. And so I don't have too much more to add. I'm probably gonna do a lot of my discussion on photos and stuff. As you probably see, quite simply, it's a residential duplex, and the only type of land use is permitted by right really anywhere in the county, in the zone area, is gonna be in agricultural uses or single-family dwelling. So believe it or not, like even a duplex would require a conditional use permit, mainly because we're gonna review parking, access, those types of things. Is it appropriate to be in there? And as you probably read in my report, you know, I, I was a little conflicted, I guess, on something, because typically you don't see duplexes mixed in with residential properties. The majority of this area is, is residential, but as you get further to the, to the west there, then you start getting into more, more commercial. And then directly across the street, as you would see, we have an industrial use, as I alluded to in my report, that we actually rezone to industrial at the time. And at that time, I, I believe it was probably discussed that maybe this part of the area is trending more toward commercial and industrial, so that, that hasn't happened, 'cause that was done back in, in 2010, when I had first started here. And so this, this parcel here, at best of my knowledge, has always been vacant. I couldn't find any other buildings on there. There was one on there, I'll show you a picture of it, that, that little accessory building. This is the plat- you don't have a copy of this here, but this is the lot up here that we're looking at. So the Yoder area, especially this, this area of Yoder, has, has been planted into a little townsite, if you will. So this is actually a subdivision lot that's in there. And so he's looking at putting a duplex on that, on that lot. The line you see coming to the south and then back to the east, that is actually a, a public alley that helps people with lots in there access the back portions of their property. So it's a public alley. At the time, it was Switzer Road here. It's since been renamed Red Rock Road or something. But, and back in the early 1900s, it was, it was called Switzer. This is an aerial view of, of his proposal, as you heard him say. You'll want to find out a little bit. What you're doing tonight is you're really looking at the land use on that property as a duplex, not really approving the, the design of the building. So, you know, you're seeing one unit here, larger unit, the house, and then a common wall, and then what he described as a mother-in-law house or unit two. To not, you're not really approving that concept. So, you know, he could, he could flip this, he could make this a little bit bigger, a little bit smaller. He could do what he wants. You're really looking at the land use of a, of a duplex out there. On the top of that picture is Red Rock Road, so you're looking straight, straight down at the property. Again, another, another conceptual view of this. The garage to the smaller unit is actually gonna be right here. And so the person that, that rents or owns this portion will have to drive down through the alley and then around, and then they would be parking in the garage that is in the larger unit. So kind of an interesting, interesting concept there, but it, it's perfectly permissible to do, do something like that. As you can see, this is the front, so Red Rock Road's gonna be, you know, out here. And so the people that live in the big house, they'll be able to drive in right off of Red Rock Road and into the garage. The person that lives here, I believe my understanding is, there'll be at least a parking spot there if somebody's supposed to come and visit. But the actual garage would be down the alley, which is over here, out and around. And then this other unit is gonna be right on, on the backside of that. So that's how they will have a one-stall garage for the, the smaller unit, right there. Looking at, you know, aerial photos, this isn't the greatest one from, from Guru, it was taken from 2023. Vacant lot is, is right here. And so, again, an industrial land use right here. You've got a residential use right here, and then of course you got the main commercial area of Yoder to, to the west here. This right here would be the alley. So you come down south and then go back east and then up into, to the residential area for that garage. This is a picture looking south across Red Rock Road. At the time, it was taken in 2021. You see that there was a, a building on here and a little over there. It's been, it's cleaned up since, since then, but it's a vacant lot. This is a picture directly across the, the street from the property. Again, an industrial, commercial type of, of land use that was, was approved by the county commissioners back in 2010. This is gonna be looking south from Red Rock Road. This is the alley entrance. So again, you'll come down the alley and then right at this building here is where you'll go and turn to the left or turn to the east, and you'll be able to go down the rest of the, of the alley. And then this would be a picture of the rest of the alley, as you're gonna go east, back toward Yoder Road, which should be like right in front of the, of the picture. Fairly narrow, but it's enough for, for a vehicle to get through. This is actually looking from the, from the alley and looking directly, directly to the north at Red Rock. This is the backside of, of the alley. So. But that staff recommends, you know, approval of the request. Really, there's not too much to discuss in, in that sense. Based by approval on the eight factors that you see listed in the staff report, and then three conditions of approval. I guess the main one that I would draw to your attention would be the first one, that the building shall be connected to Yoder Water District 101 and Yoder District, Sewer District 201, according to the County Water and Sewer District Administrative Regulations. And so whatever the sewer and water district requires for hookups to the building, the owner would have to comply with on that. So that's really the only main condition. The other conditions are our standard conditions of approval that we always place on a conditional use permit request. So. Without any questions, move forward.
Are the setbacks adequate, 15 feet?
Setbacks are.
On the side yards?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the Village District, do I have that listed in the report? I believe it's eight foot on the side and then 10 foot on the back of the property line. And actually, I had read, I don't think I had it included in the report, but you could actually use one half of the alley as part of your setback requirement if, if needed. I don't think it's gonna be needed in this particular case, but, but yeah, his proposal of 15 foot on the side is more than adequate. It's an eight-foot setback on the side. So he would have an opportunity to go bigger if he would want to.
That was my question. Assuming this was a single family, it could be even larger, and it could house a family with 10 kids, 17 age drivers. I guess, I guess what I'm saying is that.
That's a lot of kids in four years.
The duplex part doesn't bother me very much. In fact, I like the diversity of the housing in a small community like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's possible. I mean, you know, it could be a, a large, single-family dwelling. We don't have lot coverage, you know, requirements where you have to have a certain amount of square footage of your lot open, has open space. Some communities will, will have that. We obviously don't have something like that. Yeah, somebody could build a single-family dwelling, and you could have five kids that are all, all drivers, and mom and dad drive. You could have six or seven cars there, so yeah.
You know, you look at the culture of that area. You know, there's, there were a lot of single-family residences that were built, and then the son or the daughter becomes of age, and then an addition was added on. And so, and then it continued on until, potentially the whole family was, was at the same place. So you talk about the diversity. It may not be as diverse as you'd think, but maybe for right neighbor to neighbor, yes, but community, no. I, I'm with you. I have, I have no, I, I think this would be a great addition.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any, anybody in the audience that would like to address this? Appic- applicant, do you have anything, any, any additional?
I think so.
Okay. Staff, do you have any, any additional?
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of the rezone or conditional use permit must be based on the factors that list in the staff report and found on the audience chairs. This is the time the planning commission can discuss this case and ask procedural questions of staff only. Is there any further discussion for this planning commission? None. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move a case number 2024-06, the request by Horst Properties LLC, requesting a conditional use permit from the Reno County zoning regulations to construct a residential duplex on a parcel of land zone V-1 Village District, be approved based on the eight factors and three conditions of approval listed in the staff report and asserted at this public hearing.
Second. Been moved to second. Is there any, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, staff, please call the roll. Shortfeger?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Zeltz?
Yes. Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Curtsman?
Yes.
Build that house.
I've got Mr. Macklin out of here for his.
For his six.
We got one more letter here to go, I think.
I'm still gonna leave. I know what you're gonna do. I'll read the 40-page notes of this. I read the last one.
Harley, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Harley.
Okay, moving on to letter C on our agenda. Discussion possible action on setting public hearing date on a series of text amendments to create Article 15-105, paragraph 58A, adding and clarifying a solar energy system, limited-scale commercial, as requiring conditional use permit, and amending the Article 15-109, paragraphs 1 and 2. Accessory use is allowed to create, provide, to create private ground-mated solar energy system. Great. Staff, you wanna kinda give us a little bit of background of what, what's transpired?
On solar, we're gonna discuss with the commissioners.
About private. The issue on private solar is, for you is whether you're gonna regulate private solar or not in the zone area of the county. And if you do, the request of at least some of the county commissioners is, that it's treated like. treated like an accessory and the setbacks matching somewhat like what you have accessory building has. And they don't want restrictions to be very harsh for private solar on private property. That's their input. That's for private.
That's kind of like what we've been talking about originally, what we were talking about.
Deal on private, making accessory use, deal of setbacks that way.
Yep, then we, yeah, that was in our discussion and then we split it off from limited scale and now we're back on.
Back on it, do what we did.
And this is ground mount.
Oh, ground mount, yes.
Yeah, no restrictions on roof mount.
Yeah, this is strictly the grounding. So what you have before you, I guess, are the pages that would be affected by, we sort of talked about this in the past and then we put it aside, like a discuss. And so I guess tonight, what I, what staff is looking for, I'm looking for, I guess from this board is really, you know, direction. You know, is this adequate, what you want? Do you want something different? Do you want different research? What do you want to be included, you know, in that?
You might clarify for us. I know you had to clarify for me the difference between accessory and accessory structure. So that way, we understand what that is and what that definition is.
So there's-
There's, I guess for reference, that would be in reference to the square footage that we approved, what was it, a year ago, maybe two years ago? That we increased from 2,000 square feet of accessory structure to 5,000 square feet of accessory structure. I just want you to clarify for the rest of the board like you did for me, the difference between what we're looking at as a true accessory and what an accessory structure.
So there's accessory uses, there's accessory buildings, and then there's accessory structures. Okay? An accessory use would be something that you are doing on your property that is not a primary use. And so maybe the primary use on your property is farming. And then maybe on the side, you know, you sell or you crochet afghans or whatever, that's an, that would be like an accessory use. The main use of your property is farming, or the main use of your property is construction operations or whatever. Then you do something that's minor on your property. That would be an accessory use. So that's what we're looking at here. An accessory structure, everything on your property is an accessory structure, but not everything is an accessory building. An accessory structure would be a fence, a fly pole, a bird bath.
Gazeebo?
A gazebo, a building. You know, a building can also be a structure, okay? But not everything is a building. So, you know, a building is a four-sided walled structure, okay? But so, but like a gazebo or a bird bath isn't a building because it's not enclosed. And so what we're talking about here are like accessory structures. And so what Russ is alluding to in our regulations, as you may recall, you know, we have situations where you're allowed so much square footage of accessory buildings on your property. If you have two acres or less, then you're allowed 2,000 square feet of accessory buildings without going through the BZA. If you have greater than two acres, then you're allowed 5,000 square feet of accessory buildings without going through the BZA. So the reason we're bringing all this up is because the question came up to be is, is a solar panel going to be considered like a building where now somebody is going to have to go through a special exception to be able to put their solar panels on their property? And the answer to that is no, because a solar panel grouping is not a building. It's a structure. There you go. It's a structure. So you're still, you know, it's not a four-sided enclosed building or three-sided or what you know, enclosed building. And so that's, so you got to keep in mind that, you know, everything is a structure, but not everything is a building. The 2,000 square foot and 5,000 square foot refers to buildings, only not structures. Is that okay? Crystal, maybe understands? So the whole gist of it is what you're looking at here is not going to mandate that everybody come to the BZA to get permission to put their solar panels on their property. Still got to get a zoning permit potentially from me if this is approved, but you don't have to go through a public hearing process.
Is, you've got me confused now, Mark.
Well, not my intent.
Is there a difference between an accessory use and an accessory structure? Because, you know, the regs here, you're defining this under accessory use and we just talked about it as an accessory structure.
No, there's no difference in that. No. Okay. Could like, you know, an accessory use can be like your solar panels.
Or a bird bath.
Or a bird bath, yeah.
You know it's a structure.
Right.
Is there any limits? There's a limit on accessory buildings. Is there any limit on accessory structures?
No.
You can have as many bird baths as you'd like.
Yeah.
And it does, accessory structure doesn't add on to the square footage that those buildings have created?
Yeah, there's no, there's no limit if you're thinking, you know, on like the solar panels, so long as it meets the definition of private.
So for example, the Bruggeman's 2.6 acres, as long as they meet all the setbacks for accessory structures, they could cover the 2.4 acres in solar panels.
As long as it meets the definition of private and whatever other regulations you put in place.
So then those ground mount solar panels don't count against their maximum number of square foot.
That's correct.
Correct.
So they could turn around and go have another shop built, say.
Yeah. Probably no building that had walls in it or anything.
So I, we wanted to make sure that that was crystal clear in your thinking on the regs. That, you know, this isn't going to trigger, you know, a public hearing process by adopting any kind of-
Accessory structure is an accessory use. They're one in the same, but not going to go any longer.
There you go.
We're good to go.
I hope so.
So if we approve this, they would, the process would be, all right, I want to put X amount of solar panels on my property. I bring, it'd be the same as what we saw as far as a project drawing and that type of thing that we bring to you, that I would bring to you, to your office and say, okay, you're meeting setbacks and all of that. Yep, you're good to go.
That's only for roof mounted, or for ground mounted. Roof mounted or exempt.
We don't care about roof. So as long as, so the process would be, I want to develop one for personal use. I would bring my project to you and show you a drawing of where our placement, et cetera. And you'd say you're within the setbacks that are defined. I would get a permit. Is that kind of a, I'm oversimplifying a lot here, but is that kind of the process?
Not necessarily oversimplifying. Yeah, I think it's, it's as simple really as you described. Yeah, you give me a drawing of your property, you show me where your wastewater system is, your house, your building, you know, and your setbacks, and you pay the fee. And if it meets all that requirement, then yeah, you're getting a permit. And after that, you know, I don't care how you install it, you know, we don't have building codes, we're not, I don't care how you wire it to your house, I don't care about any of that kind of stuff. All I care about is the location. You know, without building codes, it simplifies it a lot. So it's a matter of, yeah, you pay $50 accessory structure building permit fee and you'll have it within, most cases like within a week or less.
So this document that you provided us in our packet that was highlighted, that pretty much outlines what we just discussed.
Yeah. So on the, on the first page, page 1512, diverting a little bit here, but I wanted to make it crystal clear to everybody that we want to require a conditional use permit for the limited-scale commercial solar energy system. And so we just want to add that to the list of sample conditional use permits that require approval from the county commissioners and recommendations from this board. So I wanted to just add that. Those regulations are done and finalized, okay? So they're official.
And that's the 10 acre.
That's the 10 acre one. So that's, that's the first little change that we would make, just to make it crystal clear to all interested parties that, yeah, it does require a conditional use. It can still be a conditional use permit. It could still be an undefined type of, you know, conditional use permit, but this just makes it clear to everybody, yeah, that you have to do that. So then, yeah, so then under 15109, the first part talks about the agricultural zoning district and it lists some typical accessory uses, which we have on an agricultural property, for example, here. So then, yeah, I want to add letter L, which is, right, the way I initially had done it, we said roof and ground mounted solar systems. But then under number four, we clarified that by saying ground mounted is exempt from the regulations. The reason I guess I put, excuse me, roof mount. Yes, thank you. Now I'm confused.
You're right, Russ.
The reason I put on roof mount was because I wanted people to know that, yeah, we do allow roof mounted solar systems as accessory use. And then it goes on to clarify that, yeah, that it's exempt from the regulations. The reason I did that is I might have people looking at the regs or calling saying, well, you say, you talk about ground mount, but what about roof mount? Well, then I'm going to be answering a lot of calls about roof mounts and, well, yeah, you can just do that. But where does it say I can do that? I don't have it in the regs, so. Yeah, setbacks would pertain to, and revert back, I guess, to Article 13. Article 13, which you don't have a copy of, is the article in the zoning regulations, which is for setbacks for buildings. And we go on to clarify that the setbacks shall be from the nearest horizontal point of the solar panel on the property line. So they're not going to be vertical, you got to be horizontal with property line, so that's where your setback will start from. That way, the panel won't, if you want to put it eight foot from your property line, but if that panel spills over into the other guy's property line, no, can't do that. The whole entire panel has to be at least eight foot from the property line is one example. Last time, I think, we discussed this subject, we did set a maximum height of 20 feet. You can accept that or change that if you want, or I could do further research and see what we can come up with. And then again, agricultural uses, even in the residential zoning districts are exempt. And so you still get a permit, still fill out an agriculture exemption application. The difference is there's no fee. So if you're, if you're putting in solar panels to power your milk barn, what have you, and you state that on your application, they can be exempt and you just fill out the permit and that way, that lets me know that this is for agricultural use and is exempt from the regulations.
So like solar pump or water tank?
Solar pump, yeah.
Same thing.
Yep, same thing. For, yeah, so.
Okay, clarify what it's exempt from?
Agricultural uses and buildings are exempt from the zoning regulations per statute. So we can't regulate them where they go on the property. But they have to be for agricultural purposes and uses. So you have to be like deriving income from agricultural operations in order to have, qualify for that exemption.
And why, is there no fee charged for those?
Because they're exempt from the regulations. And so if they're exempt from the regulations, I can't by statute really charge any kind of fees for that. So we don't charge a fee. I do require the permit.
There still has to be an application?
I still require the application. I think that, you know, what that does, that helps me know that this is agricultural exempt, okay? So if I get a complaint, say from a neighbor about the location of this, I can pull that file and say, oh, yes, that was applied for and was approved because it's powering a barn, for example. And so that, that helps me.
They're applying for the ag exemption. They're applying for the exemption.
But there's a minimum size, lot size for agriculture?
There is, for the agricultural zoning district, there is, but not for the exemption. I mean, you could have a 10-acre parcel that's going to be zoned residential. You know, we've got some agricultural parcels that are 35 acres and they're going to be zoned residential, but they would qualify for the ag exemption if, you know, they're pasturing it or putting it out of crops.
If they can produce.
But somebody that's growing a garden and taking stuff to the farmer's market.
Yeah, no, no. I mean, you have to be in like production, like that, so. Yeah, so, yeah, just because your property is zoned residential doesn't mean you don't qualify for the ag exemption if you can prove that, yeah, you're deriving income from those operations. And so, yeah, so, because it's about, it's about the use of the building, it's not about the zoning of the building. So like I say, 30 acre, you have a 30-acre parcel and it's got corn on it, it would qualify for that, for example. So that was for the ag zoning district. It's pretty much repeated under the residential zoning district. Under number two, right there on page 15-14, I eliminated the word solar collectors. I think that was kind of brought up and discussed briefly last time, and so I think that's confusing. I don't know, I don't have a definition of a solar collector. I mean, I think you could, we could have several different opinions of what a solar collector is. And so rather than create that confusion, while we're doing this, we'll just eliminate that, that word from the accessory buildings and stuff.
It's a solar panel to make electricity or a solar panel to heat water.
Yeah.
It's the same thing.
Same thing.
Okay.
So that's, that's really the extent. I think the setbacks are contained in Article 13. I mean, you know, it range right now, eight foot from the road right away, 50 foot from the road right away if you're zoned ag, 30 foot if you're zoned agriculture on your side and rear yard setbacks in the residential zoning districts, depending on what you're zoned. It could be anywhere from eight feet, 10 feet, 20 feet. So that's how close you'd be looking at allowing a solar panel to a property line. You know, just like tonight, you know, we had the, in the Village District, eight foot setback on the side, 10 foot on the back. The previous case was R2, and that's eight foot on the side and 20 foot off a back property line. So those are the type of setbacks that you'd be looking at, subject to your recommendation, whether we want to modify those somewhat or make it more uniform.
It's coming at a later date.
Well, I think, as I was going to say, I think, you know, setbacks are on our list to maybe look at here, once we get through this. So if you, if you like it under Article 13, that's something to think about, because if you modify, modify Article 13, you're also modifying the setbacks for the solar panels. You know, you may want to say, well, a building should be able to be, you know, five foot from a property line. Well, when you're doing that, now a solar panel can be five foot from the property line, for example. So that's something to think about, you know, if you want to put specific setbacks in here or leave them under Article 13.
So procedurally, what do you need from us? Do you need us to vote, to recommend, vote, have our vote of confidence to recommend this to go-
To a hearing.
To a hearing process? Tell us a little bit about that process.
We, you want to tell you, we had discussed internally here about what to do. Since we modified and moved the regulations from the original document, to adopt this will take a public hearing. We also have on the table the issue- We also have on the, the table, the, the issue with large-scale commercial. We have some direction now that the commissioners want us to head down. And so that'll be our next step. And so rather than do a public hearing just for this, and then get this approved, and then work on the commercial, our thinking right now is really, once we get this kind of set in stone and ready for a public hearing, put aside, and then we'll work on the language for the, right now, the prohibition of large-scale commercial in the zoned area. Get that language set in stone, and then we'll set one public hearing date for the adoption of this. At that same public hearing, we will also do a public hearing for the commercial. And so really, staff would really request that we just not set a public hearing date right now, but give me consensus that we're done with this, or do I need to do more research for you, or do you want to do more thinking on this? Or are we ready to move on for the language for commercial, which I don't have prepared yet? That'll have to be at like one of our future meetings.
So I believe we need a motion and a vote, correct, for this?
When you, when you, this settled, so that, so that he can finish it, so it's ready for a public hearing, and then we'll get the other paperwork done for the public hearing, so we can have the same.
So we just need to validate this.
We need to validate that, either by consensus, or if you want a motion, that'd be fine, or if you want me to do further, further research, or if you want to do further research on what is acceptable, not acceptable in your mind, it's strictly this board's decision on how you want to, what I don't want is a public hearing date, though, if, if that's okay.
Yeah. I'd make a motion. I think we accept ARC's recommendations and outline it and handout regarding roof mounted and ground mounted solar systems. We'll move forward with that.
And so move to here, second?
I'll say.
Garson's got the second? Staff, you would call roll, this one is for so.
Swerfager?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Gertsen?
Yes.
Now, has there been any requests for any ground mount stuff?
Yes.
Yes. I'm just thinking, the commercial stuff might take a while. Are we holding anybody back?
Commercial might take a while.
What's our, no, we're not holding anybody back on commercial.
No, I mean, are we holding anybody back on, on private ground mount?
There's been some inquiries, audit. Some of the people I think have, through their company, modified them to, to roof mount. Because the moratorium is still, you know, in play with that. And so, yeah, I've had some people and I've had to tell them that currently there's a moratorium in, in place, and then when it's lifted, yeah, then you'll be able to, you do it, or get a permit, or, or what have you, so.
I was just thinking, by combining that stuff, are we holding anything up?
Yes.
Okay.
Cool. We're, we're holding, we're holding, we're holding right now with the moratorium and everything, but we're getting it done as quick as we can.
I think the, as far as the large-scale solar prohibition thing, you know, my understanding from our earlier discussions is that's pretty much a simple text amendment, just like this was.
Okay.
So if we, you know, our next meeting, we should have that verbiage, I would think.
Because we're just talking about it in the zone.
Be able to approve that and set a hearing date.
Maybe, yeah.
I would think, yeah.
I need to review it a little bit more, make sure that we're covering our basis on the comprehensive plan as well. And so I think we're good there, but, yeah.
It should pretty well mimic the land.
It's, it's one text, I think I had it written at one point in time. I need to go back and review that language, and I'll try and have that for, for you in June and stuff. And then, yeah, we can either accept that and then look at and enjoy, or, yeah, or I can give you a copy. I mean, you, you have this, and then you can look at it all at once. And if you still like it, then you can set a hearing date in June.
Yeah, that's what I think we should do, is try to get that moved along as fast as we can.
Yeah, I think we will. It's whatever this board wants for, you know, regulations and language and stuff. And so, yeah, so.
You also provided the, this is the, the hard copy of the limited-scale regulations.
That's the hard copy of the limited-scale, correct. And so, I did not mail it to you, so if you would like that two-hole punch, three-hole punch, or if you want to handle that yourself, that's fine, but I can do that for you.
Can I write up the cost of the new three-hole punch?
So that's for you to include in your, in your version of the zoning book.
Okay.
And stuff. And so I can punch it for you or not, but yeah, that's what that is.
Any other business? Staff, do you have any other business to be brought before the board?
Nope, I don't have anything.
Any other discussion from this board? Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Been moved in second, adjourned, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Put the same sign.